I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the DSA, the Republican Party, and all the elected officials. Any changes need to come on the work session agenda? Yes. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second. There's a motion, a box second to approve the work session agenda. Any discussion on that? Sign no, others in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The purpose of the county work session is to inform Grant County Board of Commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting. And for the department heads and other elected officials to communicate with the commissioners in regard to matters in their respective departments. In accordance with Grant County Resolution Number 1301, we welcome the public to attend the county work session, however, there will be no public input permitted at this meeting. So, at this time, we're gonna deviate just a little bit from the agenda. Mr. Sorry? Should come here? Have you ever heard of a roast? Mr. Sorry, have you ever heard of a roast?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for your gratitude, your dedication, and service to Grant County for eight years of our service.
Yeah.
My sincerity, thank you very much for everything you did.
I agree. I mean, it's, it was a very hard decision I made in May to leave the county. There's a lot of great employees, a lot of great friends. It wasn't really employees here, we were a big family. There was friends, commissioners, I've been through, I think, three or four sets. And I made friends with all of them. And so, yeah, it was a great experience, and that's been the hardest part. And Abby and I have had many conversations about how tough it was. I went from answering the phone for 2,000 minutes a month to nobody called me. That was the hardest, that was hard too. And Abby knows that, 'cause I'd call her. It seemed like every minute, she's like, "Dude, I gotta work." "All right, but I need somebody to talk to. I'm in this office by myself," so. But I look forward to what I've done, gotten a lot of great information from Commissioner Ramos in my new endeavor. He's been very helpful, and as all the commissioners have been. And everybody looks forward to serving the public in a different way now.
Have you thought about volunteering in dispatch? They talk on the phone, so.
No, I'm good. I'm out of that. I'm out of that. My, my new job is about listening.
I appreciate you all, Dave.
Yeah, no.
It's been impressive.
Yeah, it's been a tough, it's been a tough change, from conducting the meetings and trying to raise your voice and steer it to sitting back and listening, so. That's been the hardest change.
Much, John.
No, thank you, Dave.
Appreciate everything you do.
Appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to review the September 11th, 2014, regular meeting agenda. And I assume, Abigail, you're still going to do that this mo, this, this week?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, we're just gonna register the financial report, and we have Linda. Can I? Just remember, we're gonna do that after that. If you wanna do it now, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. The expenditure report for this period of September 2014 covers AP checks, beginning with check number 171573 and 171731, for a total of $731,819.84. And in that amount of the AP checks, there was a check issued to Midloma Construction for the exhibit addition at the fairgrounds, in the amount of $41,324.98. There was also a check issued to Suckathon Construction for the Tyron Fire Department addition, and that was payment number three, for an amount of $58,478.78. And there was also a check in the amount of $162,738, and that was to TESR fire equipment for a fire truck at the Tyron Fire Station. And the payroll check reporting for this period covers August 17, 2014, through August 30, 2014, for a total of $208,835.78. So, the total expenditure report that needs to be approved is for a total of $940,655.62.
Thank you, Linda. Does anybody have any questions on the financial expenditure report? Now we can move on, maybe.
Mr. Chairman, under item C, we have approved disapproved provisions to the Sheriff's Office disciplinary action policy in Detroit, remove the job description policy. I don't know if the sheriff wants to talk about that.
Hi, Ellen, too. So, Sheriff, can you just kinda go over the changes you want?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. There was an issue that was brought up recently in regards to disciplinary action in the Sheriff's Office, and we just wanted to make some corrections and revisions on how the policy is to be applied. So, therefore, I presented this to Abby, and I also presented it to the union, so they'd be aware of what, what was gonna be happening, how we were, how I was delegating authority to the lieutenants and above, in regards to taking action when I'm not available. That's all it is, is just cleaning up a little bit of the policy and the job description. If you have any questions, I'm, I'm being happy to answer.
What basically doing is, is you're giving a, is a lieutenant a little more power to discipline, but he's, but he's limited it, he's kept it limited, right?
That's right. They, they, I gave them a little authority to up to a written reprimand. After that, it obviously has to be done by me. So, it just, we just wanted to clarify that they had the authority to do a written reprimand.
And we're still gonna review all of those?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll also come to me.
And Sheriff, when you say lieutenant and superior officers, superior officers, could you discuss that, what you mean by that?
Yes, 'cause as far as a superior officer, I only have one, which is my undersheriff, and I wanna make sure that it's understood that he also has the same authority, because in our policy, when I'm gone, the undersheriff takes control and has all the authority that I have when I'm not available.
Should we clarify that?
There's one more, just a little bit. I should be able to talk about it.
I was gonna say, is there a definition somewhere else in the policies that say that, though?
I'll just talk with the sheriff and be more specific about it.
About you, Dave. And it says plural, too, so. Does Kevin know he has others out there?
And that's probably the least we can afford, for that at least everybody gets to review it and catch stuff that we missed.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
I think it's impressive that you continue to look at your manual, your procedures and such, all the time. That's important. I think we see in the news all the time where some agencies aren't, and they're getting themselves in trouble, so I appreciate that. Keep us on hot water, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Abby, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under item D, we have approved disapproved certificate of property tax rates and bills for tax year 2014. I just received that, and I believe Ms. Guthrie, your assessor, is reviewing that to make sure it's accurate, and the agenda for you to approve.
Okay. Any comments at this time?
I'm sorry?
Any comments at this time?
You know, since I just received the tax rates, I'll have that time to call the schools to make sure that they agree with the rates that are being applied as well, and then I'll get you the comparison from last year to this year's tax rates, showing you the difference.
Okay. And then we'll be ready for Thursday?
Yes.
All right. Good.
Mr. Chairman, under item P, we'll have approved, disapproved Resolution R14-49, a resolution approving the sale of Grant County, New Mexico, forest receipts tax revenue bonds, Series 2014, in the aggregate principal amount of $6,505,000. And the sale of those bonds will be taking place on Wednesday, and we'll be working with our financial advisor and all that morning. And he'll keep us informed. He did tell me that initially he was going to come here and work on it from our offices, but now he's gonna try to actually do it on Thursday instead for the meeting, and he'll work on it from whatever remote area he's in, and just call us and update us on how the sale's going, and get our approval.
So, that number could change up there, depending on the rate we get and all the various insurance and such?
It'll probably end up being more.
Like six, twoish?
Maybe around six, one, six, two, is what we're hoping for. And we'll still have, we should still have the same amount for our projects, our other costs are just going down. For instance, the debt reserve, yeah.
And the debt reserves?
Yeah. So, things are looking favorable now, and that'll be taking place in the next couple days.
All right.
And so, we'll, we'll address, or we'll adjust the number based on what our sale actually is.
Okay. From last, we're going to healthcare claims board. We have run by a certificate, is that right? So, this'll be a very nice, short first meeting.
Nice meeting for Charlie.
Okay, at this time, we would move into county reports, and it's the commission's pleasure to present, introduce our new county manager, Charlene Webb. And I was just gonna give her an opportunity, normally we have everybody else go first, so you can comment on, on anything that wasn't caught by them, but we're not gonna put you in that position today, we're just gonna let you say whatever you wanna say.
Whatever.
Anything you want.
I'm gonna dab on John a little bit, it's probably already rough, I don't talk as much as he does, but yesterday, yesterday was my first day, and I'm very excited and honored to have the opportunity and work with all of you. I had the opportunity to meet most of you yesterday, and I understand what John tells me about what a great team there is here, and I think you're an awesome group of employees, based on my first impression, and I'm just, I'll reiterate again, I'm very excited to be here and continue to strive forward with the things that you've been working on and the goal that you set forth, and just can't wait to get started. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlene. I think that this time, we're just, we're happy to have you and we're glad to be here. Okay, and then we, we're gonna go out to the hospital and see what's going on with the hospital. Hi, Brian.
How are you?
Very good, thanks. Did you mention Charlene here?
I, I've not. Charlene, Brian, good to, good to meet you. Good to meet you. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, and welcome to our new county manager. Look forward to creating a really productive working relationship. There's, there's lots to work on together, so welcome. So, I wanna give you an update, a brief update from last month's board meeting, so this was our August board meeting, and just a reminder, the finances I will report on are a month prior to that, so these are the August board meeting, but our July finances. So, an update from our July finances. July was the first month of our new fiscal year, and we have some really good news to speak of. You know, we talked all about our finances for the previous year. Oh, I do wanna spend a brief second on that. I reported that we closed out the fiscal year 2014, end of June, at a negative bottom line of $2.4 million, which is significantly up from the previous fiscal year's negative bottom line of $9 million, so about a $6.5 million turnaround. But the point I wanted to make is, we are in the process right now of our annual third-party audit. The state requires us to be audited by a third-party accounting firm, and that should be done in the next week or two. We're waiting for a preliminary report, and the reason I make that point is, we've reported a bottom line of a negative $2.4 million for 2014. And based on some of the audit findings, that may shift a little bit, as typical in an audit, and it may shift in a positive direction for us, and I think I'll be able to report to you guys by next month. They're working on where to allocate certain funds that we received during the year, one being the Safety Net Carepool Funds, a portion of that will go back into 2014. And also, after receiving the reimbursement, we put out the monies for the Linear Accelerator Project, and we still haven't received the monies from the state through our legislators' work, and was based on some monies from the cigarette tax, but some of those monies might actually hit our bottom line in 2014 also. Our auditors are still working out that issue. My point being that $2.4 million may shift a little bit more, and I'll report that out. But back to July of 2015, our new fiscal year, we recorded a bottom line of $410,000, that's a positive. That's the highest bottom line we've had in the last 13 months, so things continue to move in the right direction, based on an incredible amount of hard work that's going on there every day at Heal Regional. Our days in cash, in part because of the Safety Net Carepool monies that we had, went up in July to 152 days in cash. That's up from the previous year, July of 2013, of 109.
So, that's not a good number?
Um, yes, it is. Um, let me see, that's finances. I wanna talk briefly about our transitions. We have our home health and hospice transition that we got the chance to talk about over the last two meetings and many meetings out in the community. Our transition from hospital-based home health and hospice services into community-based home health and hospice continues. In addition to our local agencies, Horizon Home Health and Horizon Hospice, it appears that another New Mexico-owned and operated company called Amber Care is extremely interested and active in moving into this area to provide additional home health and hospice services. We anticipate that they're gonna make a, do a public announcement in the next week or so. And I just wanna remind people, Heal Regional has no affiliation with Amber Care, just like any other agency, they can come into the community to deliver services as an independent agency. Heal Regional is simply providing them support in this process. I also wanna clarify, this is a key point about this transition. Our initial purpose for the transition was to right-size our organization, our hospital, to focus on establishing our core services as a hospital, like every other hospital in the country, and part of that is to focus on the services that cannot be duplicated in the community. Home health and hospice is one of those services that can be duplicated in the community, and that's one of the key factors which created our decision to move forward with that transition. That's our, that was our purpose. As we continued with this transition, this wasn't a focus of ours, but we began to look at, is there any assets from our home health and hospice that are sellable? And I wanna make this point, because there's been some rumors that have come my way, "We heard you are selling our patients," which obviously we couldn't do and wouldn't do. "I heard you're selling their employees." Well, we can't sell employees either, they're human beings. But we do have an asset, besides desks and chairs, that people could sell. It turns out that we can sell the provider number that we have for home health and hospice. So, we have considered selling our provider number. Now, any agency can come and open up their own home health agency, they don't need our provider number. It helps expedite their billing processes, though. So, it is of value to Amber Care in this case, to purchase our provider numbers. So, we're working through the details of potentially selling our provider number to Amber Care, to help them get up to speed quicker. If we weren't to do that, our provider number would just expire at some point in the near future.
What do you mean, provider number?
So, any agency, healthcare agency, has several provider numbers in order to bill. So, Medicare, you have to apply for and receive a provider number to bill under. So, it's simply a billing number that they use to bill for services, that acknowledges their ability to bill for services. So, I wanted to just clarify on that.
Is there a scarcity of provider numbers? Is that, is it hard to get?
It, it just takes a lot of time to get, so you have to apply, and you know, as you can imagine, it takes a period of time. And in the meantime, excuse me, as an organization, you can't bill, so you have expenses, but your, your billings are held up.
Okay. So, is that provider number good for any place in New Mexico, or only for Grant County, or only for...
It's, it's in this area, and it's beyond Grant County, but it's in this general area.
How do you justify the price?
There's, excuse me, there's, you look at fair market, you can, you can value this at fair market, so we have some legal counsel looking at that fair market valuation.
Okay. Just kinda funny that the government creates a scarcity for a number to bill themselves.
Well, you know, and so, it takes you longer to bill, and they can hold on to the money a little longer, you know.
I understand.
You guys, you guys understand.
I, I, I don't like it, but I get it.
Yes. But we wanted to clarify that, so when people say, "Oh, they sold the business, they sold their license," we didn't sell the business, we didn't sell the license, we can't sell our license to provide services, just that provider number, it helps them get up to speed with billing quicker.
I do have personal experience with Amber Care, and I feel as though they are a fantastic organization, just so you know.
They're New Mexico-owned and operated, they have an employee ownership model, it's a really socially responsible company. So, the end result of this transition will be, as we all hoped, that our patients will have a choice of where they go for home health and hospice, they can choose Horizon Home Health or Horizon Hospice, where there'll be another choice in town, and our caregivers will have a choice of, of where they work. That was one of our ultimate goals, and it looks like that's gonna play out. Another transition we're talking about is our emergency room medical providers. We currently are contracted with a company called M Care for our medical providers. We're transitioning to a new company called Enova. They're a more regional company, smaller, and that transition looks like it'll take effect on January 1, as planned. We think this is gonna raise the bar even further with our service car community in our emergency department. The other transition I wanted to keep on everybody's radar is our transition of our air ambulance right-of-first refusal agreement. We continue to move forward with our, with transitioning that to Tri-State Care Flight. As you well know, Native Air has been our right-of-first refusal organization for many years, but that transition will happen over the next couple of months. Patients still have choice, so if somebody came in and chose another air ambulance, we would do our best to arrange for that. This is just a right-of-first refusal agreement, when Tri-State is the most accessible.
So, how do they set their rates? I mean, 'cause we've heard horror stories, some from, directly from us, about the rates they charge for flying patients to Albuquerque or Tucson or El Paso or wherever. Don't they seem exorbitant?
Yeah, and, and you know, they operate through a different set of regulations through the FAA, and they're able to set their own rates based on, you know, their costs, but in this case, air, the comparison from Native Air to Tri-State, Tri-State's roughly half the cost of, of Native Air. And our focus was, though, first on making sure that they had the same commitment to quality, same commitment to service, but that's the, one of the major complaints we, and I'm sure you guys have gotten to the last couple of years, the cost of the air ambulance services when somebody's flown out.
And you know, even though Tri-State obviously's had a couple of hiccups in the last, what, 60 days, 90 days?
First, he's had the one, the one accident up near TRC, the, the fixed-wing flight out of El Paso, if that's the one you're referring to. Uh, uh, yeah, that was Elite ground and fixed-wing flight. So, Tri-State, Tri-State is the helicopter flight. There is a, they have a partnership with Elite to do ground and fixed-wing flight, and so, so yes.
So, we're only using the helicopter portion from Tri-State?
Our direct agreement is with Tri-State. However, they are also the dispatch for if there is other needs. If there is fixed-wing needs, they have a partnership with Elite, so they may be using Elite for fixed-wing or other ground transport.
And you guys are staying on top of those incidents and...
Yeah, and you may have heard some of the explanation of, of that incident out of cases.
I have it, but we don't need to go into it today, but I just wanna make sure that the public knows you guys are staying on top of that, and that if you start seeing issues, that...
Of course. And just like any other, this is not even a contract, this is an agreement, just like any other contract, we have 30, 60, 90-day outs. If things don't look right with any of our contracts, we have the ability to exercise an exit from the contract. And I'll just remind the chair and the commissioners and the community that we already use all of these services. If, right now, we have a, our agreement is with Native Air, but if Native Air is out on a flight, and we have another transport that needs to happen, we go to the next available agency. So, we're already working with all of these agencies, and we will continue to work with all of them, whoever is the most available. This is just that right-of-first refusal agreement, that we go to them first, unless it is requested otherwise by a patient.
Where does Tri-State keep their nearest helicopter?
We're actually going to be keeping it right on our helicopter pad, and they're gonna be setting up crew quarters and maintenance shed on, on our grounds. So, they're gonna be located right there.
Okay.
Well, I think what's, I like is that, if in fact, I don't care for or want, say, the, the local flight, I can choose that.
Yes, and in that case, we're, you know, working out the process. If the one you choose is available, we will most certainly move in that direction, but we'll, you know, just like any other service we provide, patient has the, the right of choice. We'll let them know what that means. They may choose another company that's out of the area at this point, and we'll let them know, you know, the implications of that, but they most certainly have a choice.
That's funny.
One last thing is just that we continue to track the new federal law, HR 3230, that's the Veterans Access Choice and Accountability Act, that is providing, attempting to provide increased access, more local access for veterans' care. Government, federal government's still working out the implementation of that act, and we're tracking that closely, so that we're positioned to offer as many services possible to our local veterans, so they don't, you know, have to travel as far as they've been over the years. And I'll stand for question.
Okay. Right. You haven't been asked them all? How, how is your staffing at this point at the hospital? Are we at 75%, 85%, 90%?
I'm assuming you're referring to our nursing challenge right now, that's the challenge across the country with our nursing shortage, and we are, we continue to be challenged in that area. I would say that we are near fully staffed, because we are paying the additional expense of bringing in traveling nurses, which increases our costs, but maintains our ability to deliver those, those critical nursing services. So, we are still extremely challenged in nursing services, but we are bringing in staff to make sure that we have staff available to treat our patients. That's one of our focus areas of work, to see if we can turn that around, and we have multiple activities and initiatives going on to shore up our ability to retain and recruit new nurses.
Now, has it... Now, has there been surveys given to our outpatients on performance of care here in the last two years since we've had this downfall?
Yeah, we do a number of surveys and every patient that comes in, you guys, if you've been in our organization, know that you'll get a survey, a standard survey that allows you to comment on any services that you receive. And so, yeah, we've been tracking that, we've been tracking for many, many, many years.
So how do I begin here? We have a commission meeting, 13, and I think you're sending somebody to the interim committee in TRC on Thursday morning for?
People, yes.
Okay, good. As long as I can get with them when they get back so we can kind of get a briefing on what's going on on that, because I'm not going to be able to attend.
We'll make sure that happens.
All right. Anything else? Thanks, Brian.
Appreciate it.
All right. You ready?
Ready.
All right. Go ahead, Mike.
Chairman, Commissioner, members, respectfully submit my report for August 28th through September 9th. And before I do so, I'd just like to personally, on behalf of the detention facility, welcome manager and we look forward to your site visit. Item number one, status remains the same. Item number two, on our detention facility update, Grant County Detention Facility currently has no vacancies. We have the two newly hired officers who are progressing well through their field trading program. Our detention facility has asked a major and also a commander from Southern New Mexico Correctional Facility to come down and do an assessment to determine our safety, tactical and critical incident policies and practices. And I think it's important they are always to come down and they're going to do an assessment for us, so we're going to take that assessment and improve our practices over at the facility. Last week I met with law enforcement, I met with the hospital representatives, the emergency room, and we were there to discuss some medical clearances. I think that was a very important issue. I think you all wanted me to do that. I apologize for taking so long, but we did, we did discuss some medical clearances and also the facility's medical capabilities at the detention facility. It was a great meeting. We had a better understanding of what each one of the respective agencies that were there and what their responsibilities were, and I think we got a lot cleared up. And, you know, Sheriff, thank you for sending your representative, Kevin. We got a lot done and I think what came out of all of this is we have a better understanding of one another and, you know, how we conduct business. The other thing I'd like to do is, Brian, I'd like to commend Mr. Osuna, who went down. Good guy. I mean, he was just awesome to work with and I look forward to working with him also. And so we had, we had a great meeting. What I'd like to do is invite the ER staff, I think it's important, and yourself, Mr. Cunningham, to take a tour of the facility and also of our medical operation there so you guys can understand also what our capabilities are and what we can and can't do. And I think it'd be important, I think it's important to do that. So within the next couple of weeks or so, I'd like to extend that invitation to your personnel. Thank you very much for what you do also. Item number three, our facility assessment, the detention facility maintenance remains the same. And also, I'd like to thank the commissioners. For the first time ever, the detention facility officers have their best and we got them in this week. You just, you can't imagine what that's done for their morale. You can't imagine what it's done, they're wearing them now, we're going to have a must-wear policy. They're putting them on, they look great and hopefully, you know, we'll get to show you what they're all about whenever you do your site visit, but I'm, we're very appreciative of that piece of equipment. Thank you all for that. Item number four, training update, all sergeants will receive their first line supervision training, all seconds, and we call them seconds is because the sergeants name someone, they pick someone on their shift that they feel they have enough competence in to when they're gone on their days off, that they will take over their supervisor's duties. What I'd like to do is sometime in the near future, establish that instead of seconds, call them corporals and establish a command structure with corporals in it. What I'd like to do also, and thank you, Abby, for approving the training, is I'd like to have those seconds also attend first line supervisor training because if they're going to take over supervisory responsibilities in the absence of the sergeants, they need to have that training also. So that training's been approved and we'll be giving those seconds to that training. Sergeant Alina and Sergeant Lucero will be attending instructor development training the end of September. We're continuing with our 40-hour refreshment training for all detention officers. Our defensive tactics training for the two remaining, the two returning officers that were on medical leave, we'll get them done this week. Far intervention on the inmates support program, we have been meeting with our legislative personnel again. And this morning I did receive a proposal from Kelly Reynolds. She's the intern that's doing the work there at the detention facility, preparing inmates upon release, hopefully to cut down on the recidivism. She did present a proposal this morning and I'd like to give that to Charlene sometime today so you can review it and take a look at it. It's really important to, I think, a lot of programs that we're trying to do now. But anyway, that's where we're at as far as the inmates support and we continue to meet. Hopefully we'll continue with that program and get some funding for it. Item number six, the status remains the same. On the statistics, our average daily population for the month of August 28th through September 9th, our average daily population is 71, which is five less than last month. High population males is 71, 13 less than last month. High population females is 14, nine less than last month. For the month of August 28th through the 29th, there were 81 inmates, which is seven less than last month incarcerated in the facility. Statistics show a decrease in activity. Our monthly agency totals, I've given you two totals here, I've given you the month of August, the, for the entire month of August and then for the reporting period of August 28th through September 9th. So for the month of August, the arrest totals, our Silver City Police Department, 164, New Mexico State Police, 23, Grant County SO, 20, Santa Clara, 11, Barrett, 4, Hurley PD, 14, adult probation, 2. And Gamin Fish did not have any, New Mexico, Western New Mexico University Police had 2. Arrest totals for September 1st through the, September to the 9th, Silver City PD had 30, New Mexico State Police had 3, Grant County had 3, Grant County SO had 3, Santa Clara had 1, Barrett Police had 2 and Hurley Police had 2. Our detention facility conducted nine district court transports, Division 1. We had 10, Division 2, there were 4, Silver City Municipal Court had 2, Santa Clara Municipal Court had 0, Barrett Municipal Court had 1 and Hurley Municipal Court had 0. There were 0 medical transports as compared to 0 last year. Total number of transports for August 28th through September 9th was 26 as compared to 65 last month. On our utilization and occupancy, there were 10 felony offense levels, there was 10 felony, 36 misdemeanors, probation violations and warrants, there were 40 for a total of 86. Total hours in custody is 7,520, average length of stay is 6.89 days. That's my report, sir.
Thank you very much, Mike. Anybody have any questions? What happened, nine male? Of the, of male population, you can have males, females, nothing happened? You sent them all home?
Nothing happened. We sent them home, sir.
Good. Wish we had more days like that, you know? That's what we shoot for.
Okay, anything, what's going on?
I'm going to make my report kind of short, I've got another meeting to attend. We did have a, an inspection done by FEMA and US Fish and Wildlife on our, on our reporting for affecting management program. Also, the US Fish and Wildlife gave us some additional requirements, I guess, they're working with FEMA now in that if there is a development within the flood plain, that we also have to check whether or not it's in a critical habitat area. And so they're kind of making us responsible for identifying the critical habitat areas, making sure that the, that the people that are developing in that area attend to what they need to. We're not solely responsible in the fact that we have to have any permitting type process, but we're supposed to assist all those developers in trying to obtain the permit from US Fish and Wildlife also, so that'll add to our, to our stack of things that we need to do. Of course, submitted our ICIP to DFA, they received it. We had, we did have a few little errors in our, in our reporting, we fixed those up. They are going to review, we haven't heard from them as of yet, so hopefully our ICIP is where it needs to be and we don't have to do anything more with that document, so. I was still trying to fill the positions in our, in our office, Joris and Lys' positions are still available. We will have, we conducted some interviews last week with some in-house participants. We did have a few recommendations. I chose myself to go out to the general public for some additional applicants. We did have some applicants that met part of the criteria, but I felt that, that the part where the organs officer, we didn't really have anybody that had general knowledge of that position, so. So we're going to take a look outside of Grant County, continue to keep, of course, our applicants from inside, in-house, in our application process and see if we can't fill that position as soon as possible.
Are these your new positions?
The, 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 the position was not a unique position by this is. And we did propose in-house about this position, we, we had a few applicants that didn't need anywhere near the minimum qualifications, so. So we did go out of Grant County and we received three applications and we're going to interview for that position next week. We have, we have some, it's really difficult, the, there's not too many applicants that know our, the GIS software and that mapping program, it's kind of difficult to find those, that technical ability and especially difficult with what we pay. And so we're kind of taking a look at that also to see if we may have to try and make some adjustments though because it's difficult to find those technical skills. And it's, we have those employees here for a long time and they're hard to replace anyway, so we try to, we try to separate the, the GIS and the mapper, trying to remove some of those, the deep research and the title research portion, but they, but Vale did to try and increase the overall means of utilizing the GIS portion. We don't use our GIS when we need to. And so, so that mixture of skills that we tried to get into our office, it's, it's difficult to find applicants that kind of even meet the minimum qualification, so. We're working on it. Well, and if we have to, we'll go back and we'll, we'll start from scratch and train people. I was hoping the transition would be a little bit easier. My report would be full of other things, but we've just been trying to make up the, you know, the loss of that personnel, so. So we're busy in the office, we haven't done much outside of the office. That is past 50 years of experience, so if this one's, it would be very hard to replace it, but good luck and I know you'll do the best you can. We're trying and I do have background in GIS and GIS, but we, we're just not getting applicants, we're not getting those applicants.
Okay. You have a question? Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just real quick, I'll start with the public works department. As you know, we do all the senior centers and keep, and upkeep with them. We finished the hood range and the code compliance at Santa Clara, finally got that done. Working with Terry to implement a new grant for the senior programs to give them confidences to state that our martial office with the hood ranges at FIBA and at the Silver Center. The, at the, the John Park with Gary Staley helping the COVID, the COVID cross-country team get ready for their big meet next weekend, so we got the guys out there reading. Gary Staley has, has offered us JQ to bring some kids out this weekend and so we're working, you know, everybody's working hard, that's an annual event for us at Fort Beard, and so we want to make sure that it goes off without a hitch, just like it has over the last several years. Members said we've got caught up, we've caught up, got caught up on the leads and making sure that things are over. We are still in the process of getting a bid for the sopets and all of that, just waiting on a bid to either do that or we're going to do some painting out there, but I think we're looking at a construction company that'll put some metal around and not have to do that again, so. I'm working with the detention center. I know Mike's had some problems with the work leaking, we've contacted the companies that are doing that, it is under warranty, we are getting those fixed, it came down. They, they looked at it, found some issues with it, we are going to replace that and repair the problems that they had. So also some of the bottom of Firestone, I think, was the company that did some of the work, we're sending the company out of Dayton, Texas, they'll be here next week to address some of those issues and hopefully, obviously we have to, we don't find those issues until the season comes and we have a lot of water, so we're adjusting the new crew, working on that. At the airport, working really hard, we finally got a employee out there. Sorry, Mike, we have to take one of Mike's and Joe's away, but I think he's an asset. He knows a lot about the equipment. He came in, started working, everything he doesn't have is the RFP, which is the fire training that we lead at the airport when the flood comes in. So Justin and I, along with David Morrison, are working off as a team to make sure that those threats are covered on a daily basis and we haven't had any problems with that. Let's see, what else? The fuel, I'm thinking about the fuel, the RFP's been out for a week and a half, we haven't had any suitors. Justin will be attending the conference this week in Rebezo, which will have a lot of fuel vendors and a lot of other suppliers that deal with the airport. So he's going to, that's, our main objective is for him to go over there and see if he can get some contacts and maybe some that don't know that there are people out there and see how they work, but hopefully can make some contacts and we can get that resolved. Do we have some time, in my opinion? Probably not, but the fact is the fire season's at a low right now and that will probably be, you know, for us, is probably our biggest customer as we go through, so we want to make sure that we get that up and running. We're also working on the, the action plan at the airport. As you know, we have that initial meeting, we're going to have the second phase of the meeting, probably the second week in October, to make sure that I keep Charlene and the rest of commissioners involved in that meeting. I think you already invited to that. The first one took place, it was in August, and so we're going to have another one here coming soon. Also, as you know, that the contract is up with the ER service, I think Abby and Commissioner Caston have been attending some of those meetings along with Justin and so I think they, I'm not sure, but I think we've had four companies some of interest and then as you probably know more than I do, we're disappointed overall with that, so. The senior program, short some employees, we're working on getting those filled, hopefully we'll have those filled by, you know, first of Mexico. Pera Caminos, BSU, probably don't know if you do know their fiscal year, it's a federal fiscal year, which ends at September 30. So we're working on the new fiscal year 2015, which will start October 1st, so I'll bring that budget to you for approval here, probably the next meeting, which will be probably the first meeting in October. We're working through some issues there, there are going to be some changes made, but as we work through the budget, I'll let you know there will be some increases in some of the ridership, I don't think more than a quarter, maybe 50 cents at the most, but we have to deal with some of it to keep up with the cost of, 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 of the transportation system. Other than the fireside, we just been in contact about the association of counties that they want to have the Urban Interface Conference here in 2015. They've contacted me and I think Commissioner Caston, he sits on the board, I think we'll probably get together and find out places that we can have the conference. Also working, that goes in line with the CWPP, the County Right Protection Plan for fire mitigation and, you know, some of the fire behaviors we have in our community, so I think it's going to fit right in with where I'm at with the CWP, working with the Grant County Law and Service District, we got a grant for that, so we're going to be working on that. Fire station at Tyrone, I think is on schedule, I think Karen Robinson, again, he's worked really hard, even though he took over the project, it really wasn't his, he took over from Mr. Redford, but he's done a great job working with the team out of Tyrone. from Mr. Redford, but he's done a great job with him, with the team out of Tyrone and myself, so. I've been out there and it looks like, hopefully by the end of this month, we should be pretty close to having that thing done. Tyrone got a brand new fire truck, it's gonna test two, just a little while ago. So other than that, Mr. Chairman, if you have any questions, that's all I have. I do wanna, you know, welcome Charlene to the team, I think I'm gonna go out together and I think that's, that's the whole point of all of those and other directors, I think we've been really, really working hard and make sure that we stay on track of what we're doing with projects or whatever our duties are.
Thanks, Randy. Anything else for Andy? Any questions?
No. I've kept it busy though, this last few weeks. Randy.
It's just so ultra tight right now and some communities not wanting to completely fund it. We've had, we've started to talk about how to replace buses, so that's gonna be the next, the next few months is going to really be the tale on that. EAS, I believe that's been extended to the tenth, so we will make our recommendation at the next regular meeting.
I think it's October seventh.
That's when we'll make our recommendation. I think we'll be giving our packets soon in the, so I believe there were four companies submitted.
Mr. Chairman, I think those in your boxes, if you wanna look at them in advance, and there is going to be a presentation, I was gonna tap off some of that.
It's fine.
There's gonna be a presentation, I've forgotten the date, but it's a.
It's just by noon now, Randy.
I think actually, she's trying to set up several in a block time, in half-hour increments, maybe all four of the responses. And then after that, we'll make a recommendation of one of your choices, but the chairman is on the email list for that presentation. If you all.
It's advertised, isn't it?
If you all wanna take out to it, we need to advertise for it.
No decisions made, but they need to be able to listen to the.
Okay.
Yes.
The shooting range, the construction of the high house will be, we will start construction next week on that, so. I don't have a timetable for that, we shouldn't be upon to block, complete block, structure. Kevin also helped us out on that as well, getting that designed, some of it will be in kind, some of it will be some workers from Free Pro McNairan who put their community out these program to help the community, they'll be also helping us with that, so. It was a grant through Free Pro McNairan, so we'll be starting that next week.
Okay. Randy, have you exhausted yourself and you have?
No, I just wanted to inform you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, that our fiscal year 2015 budget, final budget was approved.
Thank you very much. Good to hear. And we'll go with the sheriff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. I wanna report, currently I do have one vacancy in the sheriff's office due to a retirement that we honored the individual last, last meeting. It has been posted in-house, so hopefully we'll get some good candidates. Usually we drop them to jail also, so we'll see what happens there. But it's good to hear that the detention center doesn't have any vacancies, but we might soon. But also, I did send some, some of the staff to training in Las Cruces that was sponsored by the Sheriff's Association and it was really great training for these individuals that attended and concentrating heavily on, on training with all the issues going on nationwide and in regards to law enforcement. I'm gonna stress it a little bit harder that we train more and bring more down here and even help our brotherhood here as the younger agencies don't have, or the smaller agencies don't have the ability to provide training, so I'm gonna try and bring some of that down here to help them out also. I wanna thank the staff, we've been extremely busy, as you guys have been reading in the newspapers, there's been a lot going on in the county, the majority is happening in the city, so that keeps my guys busy because we're helping them deal with a lot of the issues that go on in, in the city. Other than that, I also wanna welcome the county manager, I look forward to working with her. The two previous managers, Abby and John, really worked well with us. We have a lot of needs that we, we're gonna be asking for and Abby can fill you in a little bit on that, but I, I look forward to working with you and welcome to Grant County. Other than that, I have nothing else to report unless you have any questions.
Questions, Randy? You're gonna ask him whether he's listening?
No.
What's happening at the treasurer's office?
About time to start collecting money, isn't it?
About time to start collecting money?
Yeah, a little while. Couple months to go.
I also would like to welcome our manager and thank John and Abby for the job that they've done. And as the sheriff said, you know, we look forward to working with you and, you know, trying to address our issues and, but that's another time. Right now, the two ladies in our office are in Albuquerque, attending the New Mexico Edge Program, and this will, they'll be halfway through their certification with these courses that they're taking. We do have the State Property Tax Division in our office, it just came in today. The notices for all the delinquent accounts that are on the tax sale list have been mailed last Friday, were mailed from Santa Fe, so we're expecting to have a influx here pretty shortly with, with that part. Of course, they always wait till the last minute to come in and clear those up, but that's just, and then, we also got the notice of the tax rates, the mill rates from the state and, so we're just waiting to get the tax roll from the assessor's office so we can move forward and November the first is our target for putting those tax bills and sending them out. Unless you have any other questions? All right. Madam Assessor?
Fine, how are you? Chairman Commissioners, I don't wanna have a report, I'll have my report probably on Thursday, but I'd like to welcome Charlene to Grant County, or back to Grant County, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. I know you're sitting there going, oh God, he's gonna call on me? Do you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I just wanted to report the clerk in the Bureau of Elections Staff in training this week for the upcoming election.
She already said, Marlon, huh? Abby, did you guys have anything to?
I wanted to let you know that Earl had to run off for a family night, so he wasn't able to give us support. And then, I just wanted to remind everyone that in, normally we have a second meeting each month, but this month we're not going to, we're having the fair that week. So our next regular meeting is actually gonna be a little different, it's gonna be on October seventh, instead of the ninth, we're gonna combine the work session and the regular meeting due to schedules. And then, I think that's all I had to add, because I was just gonna talk about the essential air service. Thank you.
And I'm gonna let you off the hook this week. So Commissioner?
Well, we've been very busy these last couple of weeks. We've had a few Echo Watershed meeting, meetings, and we had a really good presentation by Highlands University on their GIS equipment that they've got. They've got a grant right now to go ahead and start using their GIS program to map our forests here in this area. So we're gonna be teaming up with Western New Mexico University in Highlands so we could, you know, put all this general information together so that we can start targeting what areas we wanna put in for grants and have the Forest Service start, you know, the, the fight on, on fire and keeping up with our watersheds. So that's one of the, the meetings I've been in. We also had a couple of meetings with the Forest Service on the appeal. The appeal went, I mean, it went well, we won't have any answers until, we really don't know how well it went until we hear from the actual Forest Service, hopefully within, you know, the next forty-five days. I also have a meeting tomorrow with the GIS Department, double NMU, and Dr. Shepherd on the GIS program that they have there, and we're gonna discuss what grants are available out there, because we're going to provide through the Echo Watershed Group. Some of our members are going to be writing for some, some grants to, to go ahead and help out our situation with the forest here. I'll also have another meeting with Dr. Shepherd on, and the athletic director to see what we gotta do to help them out with bringing baseball back to double NMU. And that, that, both of those meetings will be tomorrow. We've had, we had multiple meetings, it's been, it's been really a chore. I've had a lot of great help from Randy, I really do appreciate your, your help and your input at all these meetings, Randy. It's, it's a task and, but we're having fun at it and hopefully we, we get what we need from these different organizations. That's pretty much all I've got.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner? I think I was a good one for Thursday. Okay. It's a nice and sweet. Grant County Forest, February, February, yeah. September twenty-fifth through twenty-seventh, please attend, go out and support agriculture in Grant County. We will be having a detention center visit on Thursday, is that correct? So. Cookies? Munch? Yeah. Kinda gross, man. So, that being said, we're still working through all the issues and Randy and I, and I'm sure Charlene will get right in the mix on the core communities issues and the, and the budget. EAS, I'm excited about the essential air service, the opportunity to see what everybody's given us an opportunity to, to do. We'll be getting those packets soon. We'll make that decision in October. And other than that, unless anybody has anything, any seconds? Questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I did, just to say that, I did, at the fair, as we are, we've got public works employees out there as well, giving everything set up, so we did run over one of the electricals, you know, and I think we're trying to, you know, fix that, and so hopefully we'll be ready to go as, as we get closer to the fair, so.
The new construction is not going to be complete, are we gonna have it fenced off for the fair to, and make sure that the contractor's not thinking he's going to be working that week?
I sent the word up just to, yeah. But I, I will look into that today and make sure that we, we get an answer for you, at least by Thursday, but, but you know, I don't think he, I think he understands that he cannot be working at all during, during the fair. We need a secure place.
We got the new slab in, I don't know, they said we were, we got the new slab in, we got the metal in. Very possibly should start putting up the metal this week or this next week. All right, anything else? Can I get a motion picture? Tell me. Second, all those changes in Carolina? All right.